Good evening, everyone here and at home. We're glad that you're joining us tonight for the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven P. M. Ms. Jones, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, we're meeting today to take matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom in part our activities so that our affairs may reach a sensible conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I just want to, again, welcome everybody here today and/or this evening and everyone at home. Thank you to our officers here who are watching out for us and Sergeant Hill, who's manning our metal detector. Also, let's just remember that we are under Robert's rules, so before anyone speaks, please address the chair. Thank you. Item number six is citizens' comments.
We have none tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition, city events.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, did I miss something?
Yes, ma'am.
I missed approval of the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item five passes five zero. Okay, we've already been over six, citizens' comments, there are none. Seven is public announcements, awards and recognition, city events.
Thank you, Mayor, board. Uh, we have Nature Fest, uh, Saturday, uh, from nine to four. Uh, we also have the ribbon cutting for the new treehouse playground at nine thirty. Um, looking forward to, um, seeing a big turnout. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is staff comments and monthly reports. A, community services report. Mr. Greer.
Our community services report, our Public Works Department completed their chipper service and they did several, um, mows across the community for the right-of-way mowing. They're planning to do one more mow for right-of-way mowing, uh, beginning in October to wrap up this mowing season. Please be cognizant as you're driving along our backroads as they're out there mowing. Uh, a lot of folks like to fly by and that puts our workers at, at risk. And then for our Planning and Codes Department, for the month of August, we issued thirteen residential building permits, which brings our two thousand and twenty-four number to one hundred and nine residential building permits issued, and we completed one hundred and ninety-six, um, building inspections. Next week is a pretty exciting week for the Planning Department. We have our Code Palooza with TPU D.C., and that is our largest community involvement event to get the community's input on what they would like to see in our new development code. The first event is Monday. It is the opening presentation and there is a hands-on citizen workshop at seven P. On Tuesday, the TPU D.C. group will be in this room following the State of the City address until seven P. M. And at noon, there is the first topical meeting of housing and neighborhood character. And then from five-thirties to six-thirty P. M., there is a topical meeting about transportation and streetscapes. On Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, the TPU D.C. group will be here all day from eight to seven, and they will be open to the public for anyone to drop by during that time to take input. And then they will have a meeting from twelve to one for utilities and infrastructure. And then on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, they have, they're open to the public again from eight to noon with a closing presentation and kind of a synopsis of the citizens' input over the week, beginning at six-thirty on Thursday night. We look forward to seeing everybody out and, uh, we're hopeful that we get a lot of the citizens to come out and engage. Typically, it's about one percent of the community that engages. We're getting close to that number. I would love to exceed that number to make sure we get everyone's opinions and concerns heard and, and that our document reflects the community and what we hope to see Fairview grow into. Just a reminder, our chipper and leaf service, the last chipper service will run on the fourth Tuesday in October, that's October twenty-second. It's about a month from now. So, the people who get their chipper service picked up, uh, just a reminder, it'll, one pile of natural debris, no larger than ten feet in width by three feet high stacked, stacked neatly, will be picked up on your scheduled date. So that leaves four more Tuesdays for chipper service and then we'll begin our leaf pickup service.
That all?
That's it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right. Thank you. Item eight B, we are not going to have our police report tonight because, um, the chief and Coco, oh, is somebody doing, okay. You stood up. I thought, okay. Anyway, so Chief and Coco and Detective Reed are out, so, um, we want to, you know, we'll, we'll have that at our next meeting? Yes, double up at our next meeting, okay. Item number eight C, fire department report.
Good evening. Uh, the Fire Chief has a previous engagement this evening. My name's Jake. I'm in charge of training and safety at the Fire Department. Uh, for the month of August, we had a hundred and forty-three runs for the, uh, for the month. It's up for us or for us, it's twelve runs where we were over in, uh, two thousand and twenty-three for the month of August. We continue to see our run, our call totals increase, uh, month to month. We had twenty-six overlapping incidents. Again, that's where one crew is out on a call and another call for services dispatch. Why that's important for us is that we normally staff two crews a day, so twenty-six times in the month, we had two, two or more calls operating at the same time. There was three incidents where a fire was extinguished, there were three grass fires in the county. Uh, as we know, it's been dry and it continues to stay dry. Uh, grass fires have kept us relatively busy. Additionally, the rescue company went out and assisted, uh, the county Fire Department with the one person that was trapped in an overturned mower as they were trying to load that to a vehicle. We were able to, uh, assist in that, in that incident as well. We had twelve, uh, mutual aid or automatic aid responses to our surrounding jurisdictions. That's where we help our surrounding jurisdictions where they would come and help us, but, uh, we had twelve incidents where we went and helped them. Our average response time was up, uh, from previous months for the, to nine-twenty-one. That's again why we were traveling, uh, outside further than our jurisdiction to Williamson and the Chatham County line for a fairly large grass or brush fire, so that contributed significantly to our increased response times. As we speak every month, to report an emergency, your first call should be to nine-one-one and not directly to the fire station. Uh, as you may or may not recognize, our, our graphics got a little brighter and a little different. Um, we have changed our incident reporting system, which I'll talk about here shortly, so our graphics got a fresh new look, if you will. However, the data still shows that we're still significantly running, uh, emergency medical service calls. It's the majority of our runs, the big blue pie, if you will, in that, um, in that graph, and it's at sixty-nine percent of our, of our call volumes for August. Keith. Uh, again, we changed incident reporting software. The heat map is still a heat map, but it looks a little bit different. The hot spots are still hot. Um, you can see on the heat map our current fire station locations. It may be hard to see there's a hotspot right on top of one right there next to the park, uh, but, uh, the new heat map now also lists our station locations. Just a couple pictures, uh, from just calls that we had in the last month as well. One more forward, there we go. The Fire Marshal was relatively busy this month as well. Uh, he had twelve fire and life safety inspections with his, or normal minor corrective action notices issued. He had ten plan reviews that came, uh, through the planning office and he did his part as, as the Fire Marshal through that, nineteen pre-fire plannings. Uh, he had a forty-hour in-service class with the TBI with fire investigation. And again, as we always speak on residents in the city need smoke alarms installed, welcome to call the business line and hit the Fire Marshal's extension to get that scheduled. Training, which is where I spend most of my time. We had a relatively busy month in training, seven hundred and ninety-six hours. That's mainly due to the three new hires that we put on, uh, in August, uh, so all the shifts had a chance to, uh, spend a lot of time with the new hires and, and show them the Fairview way and bring them up to speed with what we would expect our responders on the street to have. So again, seven hundred and ninety-six hours, the majority of that was in company training, which is, I mean, it's not a lot of the pictures that you're seeing, they're out throwing ladders, make sure they know how to hit the hydrant, force doors, things of that nature. We were able to go out to M. and J.'s, uh, record lot and cut on a car, so we appreciate their, uh, ability to let us, let us come out there. Lastly, the August happenings, like I briefly talked about, we, we went live with our first due incident reporting. We're still learning the ins and outs of it. We've only had one month of data in the system to pull, uh, statistics from, so look for some more, uh, in-depth statistics as we can start trending that data as time goes on. And then we had our three new hires, John Daniels, Benson Earp, and Dominic Thessen, uh, and they're pictured there as well. Is there any other questions for me from the Fire Department?
Anyone before me? Give me just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you say Dominic's last name?
Thessen, T. H. I. E. S. S. E. N.
Okay. So, um, I saw a big, huge burnout on a trailer down the road. Can you, did y'all have to respond to that or is that?
We did, uh, that happened, uh, this month, so we'd obviously haven't reported on that as we report a month in the rear. Uh, we responded to that, it was in the early morning hours of Monday. Uh, it was a recreational camper, if you will, that had, that had, uh, caught fire and we suppressed that fire and extinguished it in the early morning hours of Monday.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, is there still a burn ban on?
Yes, ma'am, there still is currently an active open burning ban. Uh, I know we've had some rain, however, the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief have not lifted the ban, so it's currently still in place.
Okay, like for the community to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, okay, so in the pictures, can y'all flip back to the pictures, uh, that they took of incidents that happened this past month? Okay, bottom left corner, I just want to point out, um, that was a school bus incident and I just want to let the community know, this is my opinion, the police don't go on Facebook and put that there's been a school bus accident because everyone gets like worried about their children. They don't know what bus it is, they don't know whose children, if people were hurt, children were hurt or not. There are people who handle that from the schools and they really need to contact the parents and, and, and handle that situation because as soon as it hits Facebook, people start panicking. And we need to keep that, uh, area clear so our emergency vehicles can get there and it, it just hinders them because if people are worried about their children, they might try to come to the site. So I, I think that you would probably agree that that's probably not a good idea for that to happen.
I would agree, there's a, there's a, a timely time to release incident photos and information and those typically go through official channels as you, as you spoke about, uh, about, uh, incidents that involve especially the school system.
Okay. I think that's all for me. Anybody else? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Item eight D is finance report. Mr. Darty.
Thank you. This, uh, this month's August financial report, you have three documents. The first document is, uh, detailed Board of Commissioners', um, expenditure budget. The next document is a summary financial statement, which details the month's and the year-to-date revenue and, uh, summarizes the, um, the expenditures, and this is for all funds, uh, general, uh, street aid and drug fund. And your last document is, uh, all of the account balances for, uh, for the city. And, um, I will entertain any questions anybody has.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Darty. You always do such a good job laying out everything for us. Um, it makes it very easy for us to understand and see what's going on. Item eight E, city manager report.
Thank you. Um, it's already been announced, but I will announce again, uh, the annual address will be Tuesday from nine to ten-thirty, and this is a, um, Williamson, Inc., sponsored event and, uh, you will need to purchase a ticket for, to be in person. You could do that through their website. Uh, they are allowing us to do, um, Facebook Live stream as well as, um, record it, so we're going to archive that on our YouTube channel. I believe it'll also be on Channel Nineteen, if you have Comcast. Um, also wanted to announce that we are going to, uh, continue the, um, sale of pickets around the, um, playground. They're fifty dollars per picket. Uh, if you are interested, forms can be picked up at City Hall or the park. If you have any questions, you can reach out to Keith Paisley. We've had a few questions about our welcome signs, about having them, um, spruced up, and I did want to announce that we have noted that they've been in, uh, disrepair for a while, need to be updated. Um, this is one of the, uh, when we were talking to the, uh, uh, firm that, that was, uh, going to design Historical Village, we asked them if they could take on some smaller projects in the process, and this is one of those projects, uh, to design, uh, the, the, uh, the welcome signs at each end of the ta, end of town. Uh, hopefully what we'll do is be able to put together, um, three or four options and, and have, have, uh, have the folks, whoever the board wants to be involved in the selection process to do that. Some other projects that we're looking at, uh, we have some work that needs to be done at Histor, uh, Veterans Park on the dam. We also have, uh, a perimeter trail bridge that we need to have constructed, uh, and I believe there may be a couple other little park projects that need some engineering that, that, um, that they'll be taking on as well. These were projects that it would be hard to get an engineer firm to just do one of them, so we bundled it with, with the Historical Village project. Also wanted to let folks know that early voting, uh, will start October sixteenth and go through October thirty-first. Um, that will be, can be, that will be held at the Fairview Recreation Center, um, and it'd be hours eight A. M. to six-thirty P. M. Um, and, uh, on weekdays, and then Saturdays from nine A. M. to two P. M. Um, Election Day voting is November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, that will be at Westwood Elementary and Fairview Rec. Center from seven A. M. to seven P. M., and that'll be depending on, on your, on your, uh, where you live. Um, also wanted to announce that there will be joint board training, uh, being scheduled for December, um, and, uh, just, uh, some of this, uh, will be, um, joint and some will be separate. There'll be some things for, for each individual board and some that we can do together, but just wanted that to be on everybody's radar. I believe that is it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Darty. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, meeting minutes from September fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item nine A passes five zero. Item number ten, old business, ten A, codification and revision of ordinances. I will now open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item ten A two, second and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, an ordinance adopting and enacting a codification and revision of the ordinances of the City of Fairview, Tennessee. City manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you. Uh, this is a much-needed revision. Um, the last revision was in two thousand and twelve. Uh, M. Task offers free revision every ten years and, and we have been reviewing this for, uh, approximately a year and a half. It's been reviewed by M. Task, Patrick and staff. Um, it includes all current ordinances, updated laws and best practices from M. Task. Um, any future changes will be made by ordinance. Uh, copy will be located at City Hall and electronic copies will be on the M. Task website, city website for citizens to view, and then, uh, we will email, um, electronic copies to, to all board members. And, um, I think that's, that's all I have on that unless there's any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Ten A two passes five zero. Item eleven, new business, eleven A, resolution forty-two dash twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners authorizing the mayor to execute the annual inter-local agreement between Williamson County and the City of Fairview regarding periodic roadwork and maintenance to municipal roads. City manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you. This, um, this resolution just allows us when the, to get on the schedule with the county, uh, when they're doing paving and then there's a, a stretch that city, they can just go ahead and pave it as well and then bill us. Um, it really helps the city in, in, in several ways. Uh, it's, saves us the bid process and it also saves, uh, it's usually a lot less expensive when they're, they're doing it, they're going to be out there anyway and, and just get the city portions as they're going. Thank you.
Move for approval. Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item eleven A passes five zero. Item twelve, round table, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner McDonald.
Uh, not much tonight, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to say thanks to Richard for everything he's doing, getting ready for Nature Fest this weekend. I'm excited for it. My kids can't stop talking about it. My youngest, I guess it's the, her age of kind of putting two and two together for the first time, so she thinks it's going to be like, like an amusement park is rolling into town, so I'm excited just to see her, but yeah, looking forward to that. That's all tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo that same sentiment and hope to see everyone at Nature Fest Saturday morning. I won't be there long because I'll be heading to a softball tournament, but Nature Fest has always been fun over the years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and board. Uh, I want to thank the police officers for what they do for us here at, at City Hall and, and the meetings and everything. It's nice to be able to, uh, feel safe. Uh, also want to thank all the staff that, and the work that they do for us, uh, and I want to thank all the citizens for their attendance and everything that comes to our meetings and everything. Uh, the next thing I'd like to talk to the board about for a minute, if you don't mind, uh, at the Parks and Landscape Board, we have an opportunity to proceed, uh, looking into a grant to, uh, possibly do some work out at the, the, um, Cloverleaf and the median out there. And, uh, I just wanted to see if y'all, uh, had any ideas, if y'all could help me if about proceeding forward with it. Uh, I haven't been able to reach the state this week. He was on vacation last week and we've missed each other on a couple of other calls, but I do have to have permission from the state to, uh, move forward with this. But the, um, the grant, uh, is with the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, a gentleman named Jimmy Miller, and if y'all would like for us to proceed, I'm not sure that we will have time to, uh, work up the grant, uh, between the deadline, which is, uh, eight days from now. Uh, but, uh, hopefully there's another one coming in January that maybe we can be more prepared for. And, uh, but first off, we got to take care of the, the proper procedure channels that we need to go through, and I talked to Josh there a few minutes ago about how to talk about it tonight, so, and that's what he advised, that we, uh, if y'all want me to proceed with it, I will work, uh, with the, uh, Parks and Rec. Board and see what we can get done and get, get some work done out there at the interstate and, not at the interstate, the, uh, Cloverleaf and the, uh, median. One of the things that, uh, that we feel sure that they will pay for or help pay for is the replanning of the dead, uh, trees that are out there as well as the cost of removing the invasive sea, uh, uh, species that are out there that, uh, have actually come up wild and they're not actually part of the, uh, uh, shrubs and stuff that were out there at, at the very beginning. So I just wanted to see if y'all had any, uh, reason for us to, uh, go ahead and proceed for it. That's what I would like to, just get y'all's opinion on it.
Yes, Josh.
And Mayor, just as a clarification, so they're still at the, the fact gathering stage on how the grant process will work with the state, so it's no commitment, uh, on the city's part yet, it's just, uh, Commissioner Hall working with the board and whoever the state rep is to figure out what they need for the part of the grant process. A formal resolution will come to the board before any actions taken.
Thank you. Is this a matching grant or a?
It's a twenty-twenty, it's twenty thousand dollars plus would cost us and they would put in the other twenty thousand. Then there's another one, uh, forty thousand and they would pay the forty and we would pay forty, so it's according to where we, where we stand. Now the, the one in January, I don't know the specifics on that just yet.
Tom, if we do a matching grant, do we need to do that in a budget or can we do that, uh, before that? we do that uh, before that?
We would need to get it in the budget at some point. Um, you know, we would probably need to have discussions on where we want the um, our portion to come from. I'd probably recommend tree bank, but you know, we, we would, we would have those discussions and decide exactly where to go and then also make sure we have uh, know our responsibilities as far as any administrative uh, responsibilities we may have.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hall?
Just to see if y'all want me to proceed with it and everything. And this is coming out of the rec, Parks and Rec Board.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, mayor. Nothing further tonight.
Okay. I just want to welcome our new hires to the fire department, John Daniels, Benson Earp, Dominic Thesen. We are um, excited to have you guys onboard and you're coming to a great group of people. We have a wonderful fire and police department and I appreciate everything they do. As others have said, we are so excited for Nature Fest on Saturday. So everybody be mindful of a little bit of traffic around Bowie Park and just bring your families out and enjoy. We've got 96 vendors. And so uh, Richard and I had looked over, every, every year, um, I guess for the past two years that we've had it, um, Richard and I kind of make notes after each Nature Fest and we think of things that we can do a little bit better next time. So you'll see a little bit different setup this time. I think it's going to be very nice. It's going to be on the grassy hill that, where we used to have the horse, uh, the horse arena. So if you, if you've been here long enough to know where the horse arena was, and you'll be able to see it when you get there, but more of the parking will be uh, towards the nature center. And then we'll have, if you're heading up that direction, we'll have the food vendors on the right, all of the other vendors on the left, we'll have the stage. There'll be a petting zoo behind the stage. It'll be up on the hill at the very end, petting zoo and um, bounce houses. So we've uh, decided this year to put up picnic tables so that when you get your food, you can sit at picnic tables. And also we've got like um, hay bales to sit and listen to the music because we have some, some great artists that are coming to play for us. I'm so excited. Um, local artists that are just very talented. So we're excited about that. And um, it's uh, free to the public. There's no charge for Nature Fest. So just um, come out and enjoy this weekend. It starts at nine. And like Tom said, at um, 9:30, we're going to have the um, we're going to have the big uh, are, are we actually doing ribbon cutting? Good. Okay. So we're going to have the ribbon cutting and the official grand opening with our brand new sign and everything for our treehouse playground. So that's going to be really exciting and, and we're going to mention and honor the donors who uh, put money into the playground. So um, I just encourage everyone to come out. It's from nine to four with the ribbon cutting at 9:30. So um, tomorrow night, it's a big night for our high school. We have homecoming. And so we're going to have a homecoming parade. It starts at the ball field at 12:30 and travels down through the schools and down um, Highway 100. So just be mindful of the traffic and patient. It's not that, not that big of a parade. So you know, everybody can just hang out and enjoy the parade for just a minute and just uh, you know, show your support to the high school students with all their floats and, and um, we've got like each class does a float, which I get to enjoy tonight at 10 o'clock going to help judge. So that ought to be fun. So uh, but they'll, they'll be coming through at 12:30 from the ball field over on 96 and down, I imagine ending at the high school? Yeah. Okay. So, but everyone who can come out to homecoming tomorrow night and just, you know, enjoy the game and, and get to see all the festivities and we'll be crowning a new queen. So that'd be a lot of fun. Let's see. We have um, as been mentioned, the state of the city address Tuesday, the 24th from nine to 10:30. Uh, be mindful of the venue change. It will be here at city hall. So uh, we will have refreshments. This is put on by Williamson, Inc., not the city of Fairview. So Williamson, Inc. has uh, you know, they've got the tickets for sale. You can go on their site and, and purchase tickets. But also uh, we were asked to do our state of the city address. T-Dot will be there. We'll have a question and answer session. It will be um, Tom, uh, myself and T-Dot, right? Yes. Speaking at that. And then that will be nine to 10:30 AM on the 24th on Tuesday. Then right after that, you want to head right on over to the nature center so that we can enjoy the friend, enjoy or celebrate with the friends of Bowie Nature Park for their 30th anniversary. And that is from 11 to 12. So Mary and Ms. Teroli, do y'all have anything to add or? All right. Hope everybody comes and, and, and enjoy the decorations. They've decorated the uh, the nature center. So that's going to be nice, which will um, I guess the, it will be decorated for um, the uh, N- Nature Fest as well. Yes. So it's already decorated. So it'd carry right on over to Tuesday. And as Ethan said, the Cota Palooza, which also will be on the 24th in the evening. So we hope everyone from the city comes and just gives us your input. And we really want to pack the room so that we can get, you know, in, input from our community um, with our zoning moving forward. And a lot of our, you know, city residents, we really encourage you to come. Have I missed anything? Okay. Well, I will um, say as I usually do, let's um, please keep Fairview beautiful and not throw out trash and help pick it up. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
Thank you.